Recording for us. Thank you. And I'm going to do a roll call for attendance to confirm we've got a quorum. So Charles Kitchen, are you on?
I'm on.
Great. Lucy Prashkar is on from Alford, too. That's me. George McGurn, are you on?
I'm on.
Great. Tom Burkle, I saw you. You're on?
Yes.
Great. Danell, I think I saw you, too.
Yep, I'm here.
Wonderful. Deb Phillips?
I am here.
Peter Taylor?
Yes.
Steve Bannon, I think, could not make it tonight, but let me just confirm he is not on. Okay, I think he had a conflict. Don Coburn? Don, are you on? John Silbert?
Yeah, I'm here.
Great. Laura Rodriguez? Laura, are you on? Susan Smith?
Yep, I'm here.
Great. Tara White?
I'm here.
Great. Jane Burke?
Here.
Great. Colin, I think was going to be a little late. Colin, are you on yet? No. Nadine, I think I saw you. Are you on?
I'm here. I'm here. Thank you.
Great. Bonnie Silvers? Bonnie, are you on? Nick Fredso? Patrick Wade, are you on?
Here.
Great. Sean Stephen? Marie Ryan?
Yes.
Great. Roger Kavanaugh?
Here.
Great. And Molly Thomas?
Here.
Wonderful. Okay, so just another reminder about Zoom Bomb Protocol. Hope we won't have a VP of Monday. But if it happens, Mary, who's administering this, will suspend the meeting as she did on Monday. She will then eject the Zoom Bomber and we will resume. So stand by if it happens. If after 10 minutes we're not resumed, the meeting will be canceled. Mary, I'd like you to mute folks when they're not recognized by the chair to speak so that we can keep the background noise to a minimum. I did want to take the opportunity to introduce, if they are on, our union representatives. You met Christine Martin on Monday. Christine, are you on this evening? Okay. She is Southern Berkshire Unit A. And Kristy Kavanaugh has agreed to represent Unit D from Southern Berkshire. Kristy, are you on tonight?
Yes, I am on.
Okay, can you just introduce yourself to the group? Just tell us a little bit about what your role is at Southern Berkshire?
Absolutely. So as you said, I'm Kristy Kavanaugh. I am currently working as a special education para at Southern Berkshire. I've been there for four years. And I am also a parent of two children that attended Undermountain, a fourth grader as well as a second grader.
Wonderful. Well, we really appreciate your willingness to participate in this process with us. From Berkshire Hills. I'm sorry. From Berkshire Hills. We met Amy last time. Amy, are you on tonight again? All right. Audrey Consol is also a representative from Berkshire Hills. Audrey, are you on tonight? Okay, and Peter Carlotta, is he on tonight? All right, well, we will probably meet them at the next meeting. But thank you again to all the union representatives for agreeing to participate participate in this process. I see Mark Abrams is on, and I don't know if the full planning board has been introduced to him yet. So Jake, can you just introduce Mark to the group?
Mark and Matt Abrahams? Is that correct?
I see Mark.
Okay.
Yeah. Is Matt on, too?
Yeah, and Matt will actually be doing the presenting, but Mark and Matt Abrahams are with us, the Abrahams Group, so glad to have them here as part of the team tonight. And then Lucy, I didn't give you a heads up on this because I just talked to her late today, but Michelle Griffin from the Department of Education is here.
Oh.
Michelle is our liaison from two grant one code 191, the grant that actually feeds regionalization, so we're really glad to have her participating tonight.
That's wonderful. Michelle, do you want to introduce yourself? Say a couple of words?
Sure, I just, I work in the Office of Regional Governance at the Department of Education, and I just kind of wanted to sit in tonight because I am able to tonight and hear about the great work that you're all doing. But thank you, Jake, for giving me the heads up.
Yeah, and thank you for joining us tonight. We're very pleased that you're in attendance. Any other introductions before we get started, Jake?
I don't think so.
Okay, so I have on the agenda approval of the minutes from Monday. We obviously didn't have enough time to get those minutes even written, much less reviewed by your folks, you folks. So we will do that at the next meeting. So I'm going to turn the floor over to Jake for item number three, which is overview of research process, summary of data collected, additional reports and highlights, and framing of the models.
Okay, I think we're all set. Hopefully everyone can see the screen. So thanks again for two substantive nights in one week. I appreciate that you're all here again and highly engaged in the work. Happy to have got received some feedback from Monday's presentation. And I really look forward to more time tonight to have, to allow open discussion after we do this summary overview with you all. I'm calling this Part B. Monday was really a focus on education variables and a look at career vocational technical education. Today, what my goal is, and I'm sorry this thing is popping up on your screen, I don't know how to control it, but what we're going to do basically is do an overview of kind of where we've been since we started our relationship with you this past summer. And then do a very brief overview of the various topics that we've researched, what sort of data we've collected, what reports we've generated, and then ultimately lead into the setup for the framing of the models. And then the discussion of the models and the evaluation of the models will occur at our next meeting, which will be March 22nd. So part of my hope tonight is that we're giving folks a lot of substance and reviewing a lot of substance, but there's going to be a good chunk of time between now and that next meeting to look at some of the reports we have produced. So first question is, where have we been? What processes have we followed? And I'll just, a lot of this is very familiar to board members. But for folks who are participating and joining us tonight, we're happy to have you here. But just so you understand, this is really all about visionary work and either creating a strong vision for the southern part of Berkshire County as a place where you have great schools, high quality of life, and a place where people want to be. And this really is the call to action. Our success measures very broadly defined or thinking about ways to improve the breadth and quality and opportunities available educationally for students in South County. Build collaborations, new programs between the districts. Really cautiously stay aware of the identities that exist in the eight towns as unique and important. Really think carefully about appropriate practices that relate to grade level and student age. Really engage a cross-section of community members and think about ways in which we can create efficiencies that ultimately help us to reinvest in education. The mandate of the Regional School District Planning Board, this is your mandate, it was written before I came to the table, is really to conduct this study fiscal and educational visability, ultimately evaluate options and soundness of those options, and then ultimately report back to the towns on your perspectives related to all this work. The goal is really, if you look at the regionalization process, and I'll show you a graphic a little bit later, is to move through step two, which is really all about, you've done step one, which is the organizational work. Step two is really the fact-finding work, thinking about data, doing some early outreach to your community and modeling. And so that is, that is what we are doing right now. Our research questions very broadly are, is there some form model of opportunity between the two districts? Collaboration consolidation or full regionalization that leads to improved educational opportunities, more stable finances, operational efficiencies, more collaborative versus competitive model, higher degrees of equity, and improving district capacity across South County. The research models that we're reviewing, and then we've been charged with reviewing are three. The first is full regionalization of the two current regional districts into a single regional district. The second is the formation of a high school district, which would then have some organizational structure around elementary schools. And the third would be increased collaboration between the two districts. Within these three models, there certainly are sub scenarios which we'll be talking about. But we just want to make sure folks understand that these are the three basic models we've been charged with digging into. Broad tasks for our team were to look at a lot of data, really look at feasibility of the options, induct some operational analysis, do outreach to the community through surveys and focus groups, and then evaluate the options for really your digestion as a board and ultimately community input. So we have a work plan, and you'll see throughout this PowerPoint, which I will post on the website as quickly as I can after the meeting, that we have hyperlinks, you'll see one right here. And so as we go through each of the sections, there's a hyperlink to a report. And so these two or three slides that describe each of the work, working sections are really the tip of the iceberg in terms of all the documentation we have supporting just the couple of slides that we're presenting tonight. Our team has been a really big team. We've involved a lot of people, and I feel embarrassed that I've left people off, like the superintendents and the principals and the staff at the district who fed us a lot of information, to folks on the board provide a lot of input. But these are some of the core folks who have worked on this project. I have to thank people. I'm paid to do this work, and I appreciate being paid to do this work. But we've had some people on this list who really donated time and their expertise towards this project, including folks like Michelle Griffin are on the phone and the folks from the Department of Ed Finance Team this morning, who helped us to talk through some modeling. So really, we've had some great support, and we just want to thank everyone for that. One of the things we've done over the last, you know, since formation is we built a very robust website. And I continue to get very positive feedback from folks who come to this website. Certainly wasn't my conception, although it was part of helping to build the design. Carolyn Alexander put the, really put the framework together for us, but it's a great resource. And I encourage people to visit the website and continue to visit it. This particular page, the resource link, has all the reports now loaded that we have in either final or what I refer to as working draft form, which means we continue to take feedback, feedback and input on them. But I encourage you to really go there and look at the reports and plans we put together, but also the presentations. So Monday's presentations on ed quality and career vocational technical guide are already loaded. You're welcome to go there and check it out. All right, so part two of our presentation is to really go through this core question, what have we found? So we're going to dig into a bunch of topics, and I've asked my team just to be succinctly sum up the work that they've done. So I'm going to call on Rob Putnam first to just walk us through two or three slides on the first body of work, which was our historical literature review.
Thank you, Jake. The purpose of the historical review was to place the work of this current Regional School District Planning Board in the context of previous efforts at consolidation and at collaboration. It involved review of all sorts of studies, reviews of regional efforts and literature that identified best practices. And most importantly, it was put together a synthesis of historical review into findings, themes, and lessons that could be drawn. So the 1950 to 51 Regional School District Planning Board, the precursor to this planning board, was comprised of representatives from the towns of Alford, Agremont, Great Barrier, Monterey, New Marlborough, Sheffield, and Stockbridge, and concluded that it would be advisable to establish a regional school district in the Southern Berkshire area. This was, of course, after the time where the passage of the 1949 law that created being possible the creation of regional districts. And they felt that the advantages of such solution would far surpass any other solution. When the ideas were put to the voters in January of 1951, residents of seven, five of the seven towns voted to join in the new educational enterprise. So began a recurring discussion that has been repeatedly revisited, revisited over the past 72 years. Now, the first three initials initiatives are bolded because they represented the formation of Southern Berkshire Regional School District, Berkshire Hills Regional School District, and the South Berkshire Educational Collaborative, all of which provided students with opportunities far beyond what had been previously available to the students of the towns. The remaining efforts did not yield substantial improvements on the, on the level that these first three did. Now, despite the successes of the first three initiatives, the idea of further consolidation persisted and resulted in serious reconsiderations. Comprehensive studies were conducted, meetings between the respective school committees and district administrations were conducted. Some of, some of these initiatives led to increased collaborations and increased opportunities for students, but not at the level equal to the first successes. A Berkshire Eagle article of January 11th, 1951, saw regionalization as a way to offer more college preparatory, general and vocational opportunities for students. This sentiment persists to this day. Fact of 1969 article in the Eagle was speaking very basically looking at how Southern Berkshire could, the South Berkshire area could increase CVT opportunities for all the students. So what we have are the original paper that you can access at the site on the website. Proposed nine takeaways and applications that could be drawn. First, and I've broken them down to seven here, the recurring interest in consolidation, collaboration among the eight towns. Essentially, this is, the application here is to frame this current effort as the next step in the process of addressing the needs that have yet to be met and as a contemporary call to action. There are recurring themes that motivate the initiatives, which have come up over the past 72 years, would have as an application to frame the current effort as being consistent with the historical themes of educational quality, vocational opportunities, declining enrollment, and fiscal efficiency. Initiatives cannot be derailed at any step throughout the process. And that, the history has shown that, and I think a key part that everyone would be well advised to keep in mind would be to identify and address concerns of all stakeholders. Also, the laws and state funding for regionalization contain many disincentives, which I believe that requires this group to involve state representatives in all facets of the work that's going forward. Another point has to do with collaboration, and any collaboration, lasting collaborative arrangements require formal agreements. Consolidation and collaboration have been responses to external, internal, and external pressures. The current Monument Mountain Regional High School application to the MSBA is one of the many pressures that is similar to those that brought into existence some of the earlier studies, and they've got to be fully understood. Finally, leadership is critical to any regionalization or collaboration effort. And the idea is that mobile, basically, it'd be a good idea to mobilize leaderships from both within and outside the schools to champion the research planning effort and the preferred solutions. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. So our second report is also, so each of these three or four slides represents again a report, was on enrollment and student flow. I did that along with Sarah Carlton, who's on the line. And very briefly, again, the link is on the page, it'll be on the website, welcome to go there. But we did, in effect, an analysis of historical and projected enrollments. We looked at general population trends in the communities. We did a critique of the methodologies to see how accurate the predictions have been. Analysis by school, patterns of resident and non-resident, and even the question of whether or not the pandemic has had any effect on enrollment. What we found, of course, is highlighted at the very top, is that enrollment is declining, projected to, can you continue to decline? Decline 33% since 2000, and is predicted to decline another 25 to 28% by 2030. So just a couple of the key findings that we pulled out. Clearly, there's some students who are selecting to go to private and homeschooling options, about 70% of your total population. But interestingly, the students in Berkshire Hills and Southern Berkshire who choose to attend public schools, 98% of them attend schools at either Berkshire Hills or Southern Berkshire. So that is a kind of interesting point. There's quite a bit of student flow, as you can see on the lower left-hand graph, between the two schools that involves choice students who are selecting one school or the other, or tuition students who come in via typically Richmond or Farmington River. Again, a lot of data in the report that sort of unpacks all this, but some big trends that we pulled out. There's a couple of things to illustrate that. Berkshire Hills does enroll a substantial number of non-resident students, especially in the secondary grades. This is to some degree offset declining enrollment. It's not unusual. There's other districts in the county have the same phenomenon, including Lennox and in Richmond that enroll quite a few choice students. And then choice between the districts, although it has been historically at points in the history, equal in each direction. Currently, there's twice as many students from Berkshire Hills choicing into Berkshire Hills with about 25% of resident Southern Berkshire students in grades seven through 12 attending school in Berkshire Hills. So what does all mean in enrollment? Enrollment decline is having a significant effect. Effect, it's certainly a threat that districts face. It's creating some pressures, both financially and programmatically, and those pressures will only increase, you know, if projections play out as they seem to be. Enrollment pressures are creating a certain degree of competition, not just in South County, but across the county. Smaller enrollments in districts certainly create a level of inefficiencies and challenge the ability to maintain a robust professional culture. And then, as we all know, we have a high, a somewhat growing level of student need in terms of economic disadvantage, non-English speaking students, special ed students, and vocational students across the region. The third report, it was conducted by Hanover Research, and I again want to thank the Education Subcommittee, who did an incredible amount of work getting to research questions that Hanover addressed. I think that this particular report is a must-read for everyone because it's really a primer in regionalization. And there were a number of case studies they did and outreach interviews that they did to get, address, sort of answer three questions from districts that had gone through a regionalization, and they were, you know, what were the successes and challenges that were evident as part of the process? Did the strategies result in improved outcomes for students? And how would they suggest community engagement as related to this, this work? But they found, and there's, this is really a very, very high-level synthesis, but there are some things that are, are, that are certainly apparent in the studies. One is that in order to achieve economies of scale, often that means, you know, collapsing of buildings and collapsing of students into, into single schools. Governance imbalances or governance is certainly a challenge in terms of representation. But one of the most important things is this idea that building community mechanisms for engaging in the transition and in, in the regionalization process was critically important. I will point out that on the website, there are two Hanover Research papers produced. When they published the first version, we asked them to go and do a little bit more work in educational outcomes, which they did. So there is a, an amended version that was put out about a week ago. We encourage you to go there, and it, they did a little bit more work on the notion of educational outcomes, really determining that the research has quite mixed feedback on both negative and positives that are associated with the regionalization. And then what this all means in terms of what my takeaway from the Hanover Report was that it's critically important that we empower parents and community members in this process in terms of a shared decision-making process, which I know the board is committed to. Communication is critically important. A transition process, again, with community building mechanisms involved, is important transparency and governance and decision-making, and then really exploring ways to mitigate against school closings, because that is a very, very difficult situation for communities when schools are considered for closure. Our fourth report, I'm going to pass to Mary Nash, who did a tremendous job in the community outreach.
Hi, everyone. I'm going to talk about the surveys and the focus groups that were conducted as part of the community outreach efforts. The surveys were distributed to a wide range of people in the community, including general community members, parents, students, staff in the schools, and alumni who had recently graduated from the high schools. And the purpose was not only to get feedback from people, but we also viewed the surveys as an important information tool because the issues that we're asking about are very complex, and we realized that people need to know more about them to be able to weigh in with their opinions. So by taking the survey, we identified issues and asked questions, and I think we raised awareness of what sort of research we're conducting and what kinds of areas we need to get feedback on. We got over 1,200 responses, so it was a good showing on the survey. People, if you live in South County in any of the eight towns, you may have seen the flyer on your doorstep. We made a point to get it out to everyone who we were aiming to get feedback from. We had a Spanish version, got it out to people in elder service and community programs. Then after identifying some of the key issues in the surveys, we began the outreach process by conducting some small focus groups to explore some of the topics in more depth. So these were small groups of teachers, staff, parents, and students, and we had, they were conducted separately for each school district. And we view those really as just the beginning. They were done virtually on Zoom. Hopefully, we'll be in person in the future, but the next steps of community outreach will involve going out and speaking to more groups and making sure people can get heard. So if you look through the report, there's a lot of information, but then we tie it up into some key themes, which you see here on this sheet. I'll just point out some of the themes were in both districts, even though the size, you know, one district's a little larger than the other, both of them really feel attached to their identity and their, their close-knit community. We learned, I think, more than anything, that people are open-minded. They had a lot of questions, and they wanted to get more information before they formed their preferences. Some of them were leaning one way or the other, but a large percentage really just said they need to know more before they can really decide. Some of the other issues you see brought up here were transportation was repeatedly in the survey and the focus groups, a key issue for people. They wanted to make sure, you know, people didn't want their trips to get any longer, wanted to make sure they could conveniently get to school wherever that might be. Okay, I thought you were trying to move along.
No, I wasn't. I just, I had this flash.
The greens, kind of. Okay. Okay. And then there's concern just about jobs. I think that was posed particularly by teachers and staff, but people were concerned that jobs remain in place. Class sizes was another key issue that was brought up just in terms of what an optimal class size might be, and it might, that might be different depending upon the subject matter. Career vocational technical education was, was viewed as an important important factor among all the groups that we spoke to. So this just narrows it down to some of the key items. Public engagement is our next step. There's a, just further public engagement with people so open-minded, we want to make sure to get out into the community. We want to view the key considerations that I mentioned of transportation, jobs, people are concerned about schools being closed, what size their classes are. So a number of considerations. The similarities in culture are something that we see and that's occurred throughout all the research. And of course, the Monument High School project will have a significant influence on potential solutions.
Thanks, Mary. We had the opportunity to have some presentations by Ken Rock and Sarah Carlton to the Finance Subcommittee, and we really appreciate all the energy and effort the Finance Subcommittee and the time they gave us to do some of that work. So I've asked Ken to just, he's got just a single slide on chapter seventy, and then we'll talk about organizational models. But Ken, I'm going to hand it to you now.
Yep. So this is just a quick snapshot of some of our findings. If you want to go right to the next slide, Jake. We found, among other things, that the, the two collections of towns, three towns and five towns to form two school districts. When looked at from the perspective of state aid, chapter seventy-eight, which is the main aid that flows to school districts. The two school districts are really more alike than they are different. All of the towns are right or above or around the lower limit of chapter seventy-eight percentages, which is set by statute at seventeen point five percent. Both districts receive some hold harmless aid, which is really the result of declining enrollment over the years. Increases in chapter seventy-eight through the Student Opportunity Act are likely to result in some increases over time in chapter seventy-eight, but they're not going to be really large ones. We're talked with Desi this morning, the FY twenty-three, the first version called House One. The chapter seventy workbook is out. They're going to model for us using FY twenty-three numbers. What those numbers from state aid would look like to the districts and the towns if the eight towns formed one district. And we should, we hope, be able to report back to you at the March twenty-second meeting what that looks like. All eight towns are contributing substantial amounts above state required minimums. And the conclusion that we drew from looking at this is you're not going to see huge jumps in state revenue over the foreseeable future. So your most effective strategy is going to make better use or the best use that you can of the revenues, especially the local revenues that are currently available to you.
Thanks, Ken. But Ken also did a presentation of organizational models and looked at really the organizational fiscal implications of the potential solutions that we've been asked to study collaboration, shared high school, single district model, and then this idea called a cost center model, which Ken will explain. It's a really thick set of presentations, so I really would encourage folks to go to this presentation. Because Ken ran organizational models for each of the options, but then scenarios within the options or ways you could configure the district. So on the screen here is not intended for us to go through these, but just to illustrate organizationally, how you might think about all the functions that occur in a district and in a town through these three models. And really what you land on the bottom is just, you know, what does the single district look like on the left and what does a collaborative model look like on the right? But I'm going to have Ken just talk just quickly about the cost center model and then also some of the things that he determined on the organizational models.
Now, thank you, Jake. The, the first thing, I'm not sure that everyone's aware of this, but you know, regional agreements for new school districts are, are written by towns working together to determine what the, the agreement should be. Many agreements within the state have special clauses about how elementary schools within that regional district can or cannot be closed. For example, it's possible to build in a section of the regional agreement if everyone agrees to that, that a town would have to vote to agree to close an elementary school located in its town. And what I'm, want to communicate here is that you can build in protections in the regional agreement through a negotiated process to guarantee the continued existence of these very valued elementary schools. That's not the cost center model as such, but one of the things that would make that possible is what we're calling the cost center model, which is modeled after certain aspects of the Mount Greylock Agreement, which allows some differentiation within a regional school district budget by school. In, in the case of my Mount Greylock, it's by elementary schools. And then the costs, if those are different of the elementary schools can be built into a regional agreement, so they're essentially assessed back to the towns that send their children to those schools. So those two factors together enable you to build in protections to keep elementary schools open, but also enable you to ensure that the towns that are using those elementary schools within a larger regional school district are paying any extra costs that might be associated with them. When we looked at that, two slides back that Jake was showing you, that sort of bewilderingly complex graphic. We looked at sort of all the models. And in the process of doing that, we looked at the way your schools are organized now. You have multiple overlapping school districts in South Berkshire County. We have formed the view that this is not the most efficient use of available resources. And we're not just talking about school-centric resources, but you have to think about community resources as well. The people who sit on the school committees and finance committees and select boards and, and parent teacher organizations and so on. If you have many school districts, the time and the resilience of that group of people to sort of serve all those different functions can become strained. Second finding is, one of the options you asked us to explore was a shared high school or combining the two high schools into one. If you were to do that, you would need a regional school district to govern and fund that shared high school. And because you have two regional pre-K through high school districts in existence now, if you wanted to form that nine through twelve district, you would have to modify the two existing districts and either form a parallel eight-town elementary or elementary and middle school district or two separate regional elementary school districts and then the regional high school district. In other words, there's a danger of taking two districts and having to make three or having two very, very much parallel districts. The third option you asked it to look at is collaboration and there's much more to be said about this, but collaboration between existing districts is always possible. But it's not institutionalized. It's not what we would call a durable way of building connections and alignment between school districts. A conclusion that we're touching upon Monday and to some extent today, an eight-town or larger school district either organize nine through twelve or K through twelve would probably make a more efficient and we think more effective use of the available resources that you have and provide increased and equitable access to students in Southern Berkshire County.
Thanks, Ken.
Yep.
Okay. We did a, I did a brief on transportation that has been shared with the Operations Subcommittee and appreciate the members of that committee and the feedback we received. We looked at trends and best practices in transportation, things like ride length, driving times, a little bit on finance, and then analysis of what the current fleet is. We ran a number of scenarios more for just to really vet different possibilities and we basically asked two questions. How does that influence travel time? How does that influence cost? I have to really thank Marie Messini and both of the business offices for helping to put this information together. We found a lot of stuff and I won't read all of this, but clearly there's some basics around the fact the two districts run slightly different busing systems. Southern Berkshire is single-tier, Berkshire Hills is a two-tier, which means they run two runs for elementary, middle and high school. The average routes in Berkshire Hills range around, range around thirty minutes for the high school to twenty minutes for elementary with Southern Berkshire routes over forty minutes currently. Ran a bunch of scenarios and other things we looked at were, you know, the, the questions around if you became a single district and you had multiple elementary schools. How would that influence, you know, students or families being able to select through the choice, inter-district choice to go to another elementary school and how that would impact transportation? But we also know that if we decided to do collaboration between the high schools, the shuttle bus could certainly move kids back and forth. Would require some alignments of, of the schedule to do so. I do really want to emphasize, because Ken touched on in the last slide, is that both districts do a lot already to collaborate and I feel like sometimes we present information that might, you know, really, we on the surface very appear critical, but there's an incredible amount of great work happening and a high degree of collaboration already in place that I think occurs and I just want to call that out. So our findings, basically, there were a variety of things. We ran the seven scenarios and some of the scenarios just don't work. They, they will result in ridiculously long drive times. And we think about travel time, more sensitivity for elementary students. But when we looked at the regionalization models that would consolidate students on the Great Barrington Campus, either seven through twelve or nine through twelve. The model basically suggested that there'd be limited in fiscal impact, which means it wouldn't cost anymore. And the travel times would be a mixture of some ride times being shorter and some being slightly longer. There might be a few students on the outlying areas that might have a bit more of a drive. And so I just want to really emphasize that it's important also to note that this transportation analysis will need to be continued. Because until you know exactly where kids are going to school and which schools you're going to operate, you can't really do, you know, a, a point-to-point, you know, transportation analysis. So just to emphasize that. Also, we've written and published a facilities, buildings and capital report, which looks at the the schools as they currently exist. And basically looked at what condition they're in. We looked at the Mass School Building Authority Evaluation. I did kind of a profile and a history of the Monument project, which has been ongoing since two thousand and eight. And then we looked at different scenarios in which we might reconfigure the buildings. Now, this is us running scenarios. We don't assume that anything is going to happen. We're just trying to equip you all with the information that will help you to make decisions on what could work and what might not work so well. So just, just to point out, sorry. Basically, all the schools currently are under capacity, which meaning you have more space and you have kids and that makes sense. Given the decline in enrollment. You have through three schools that are rated less than a one. One is the highest rating. It's really where schools should be. Those schools are South Egremont, New Marlboro, and Monument. This is not a surprise, particularly in the case of Monument. Because they're obviously working hard towards a renovation, construction project. And then of all the scenarios we ran, you really could reconfigure students between the, the seven buildings, a lot of different ways. In pretty much all cases currently based on the enrollment you have. And if we project forward with shrinking enrollment by twenty thirty, really all the scenarios work. So we also just really do want to emphasize that any decision to close a school, we understand how, how, how challenging that is, how emotionally that driven that is. Just really thinking, you know, hard about that. And there is some information in the report that talks about best practices related to repurposing. So finally, just some findings, lots of configurations that are possible. The most viable consolidation scenarios really we think are consolidation that results in nine and twelve or seven and twelve on the Great Barrington Campus. And we know we believe, I've asserted a few times in meetings publicly, that the Monument project is going to have a significant impact on this eight-town conversation. On Monday, you got a snapshot, a lot of slides and educational quality, so I'll try to do these in relatively efficient form. We again appreciate the Ed Quality Subcommittee who's seen some of this. They helped us to develop the Hanover Report. We've identified indicators, looked at a lot of data and looked at things like scheduling and personnel. What we found and said on Monday is that the districts have a lot in common. They both have really unique strengths and are doing a lot with what I'd say are existing or somewhat limited resources. We know there's room for growth. We know that the districts have this strong adult-to-student connectivity, this level of personalization. Class sizes vary, but are generally below state averages and we know that there's certainly a demand for more post-graduation career pathway, career vocational technical path, pathway work. And so what this all means is that we believe that some form of sharing, whether that's collaboration or regionalization, could really create additional access to more programs, courses and experiences for students. And really even a more robust professional culture for staff. Class size balancing, which we'll talk about in March twenty-fifth, may yield some savings that could be reinvested. We know vocational is a necessary investment for South County. And then there's a lot of other things that really could be perceived as opportunities. And I know I went really, really quickly over this on Monday, but I just wanted to really reemphasize these, these tiles, which are just a beginning sort of set of possibilities for South County as related to educational quality. And, and I do want to really emphasize that the districts are already working on these. I mean, they're working hard to expand their early childhood. They coordinate across special education. But really thinking about ways in which we can share professional development outline curriculum. You know, I even think about the simple example of there's a set of electives at Monument, there's a set of electives at Mount Everett, and if you put those electives into a pool and all kids could access them, wouldn't that just be a great addition, right? A great enhancement? So I think there's some real possibilities here. And then on career vocational tech, which is the second part of the, the meeting on Monday night, we did a lot of, and there's a really thick report on the website. Now you can look at the presentation, you can read the report, but we looked at, we, we did a more depth in-depth about defining the terms, so people understand what chapter seventy-four is and non-chapter seventy-four. A lot of information there around economic and workforce trends. And then Ken really laid out design consideration and program recommendations. And I'll just ask him to say a few things about career vocational tech.
Yeah, very quickly, because most of you were there on Monday night. If we look at Southern Berkshire County compared to central and northern and virtually all other areas of the state, your students have really limited access to CVTE programs, chapter seventy-four programs. I want to underline that this is not for lack of effort or innovation or ingenuity on the behalf of either school district. They're doing great with the resources that they have. But a technical center with six to eight programs requires a certain number of students to make it viable. And for various historical and geographical and population reasons, you haven't had that yet. Higher of interest and we think that right now, this historical moment is a unique opportunity to really do something about it. We think that this can be done. You can come together as a group of eight towns or more. Think about it, plan it, design it, fund it. If you do it with eight towns or more, it's going to be stronger and that means you're going to have a broader range of programs for all of your students. The most effective way to do this is going to be to attach it to the academic portion of a regional high school so that kids can go back and forth. Just think like a long hallway between two different buildings so that it's on one campus. And you have access, you have affordability. And technical centers like this, some of us know this from personal experience working in and administering these centers. They can really serve adult learners at many different levels and help the regional economy. The next step, if one of the next The next step, if one of the next steps, if we embark on this, is to determine the size and range of what would be offered. So our conclusion that you should really, as a group of towns, strongly consider the potential construction of a new high school as an opportunity to design and build a new comprehensive high school with an attached CVTE center.
Okay, so our last section is we're offering some voice to the Abrahams Group and Matt, I know is going to represent tonight and walk you through where we are with the financial analysis. We know this is a really big piece of this work. So give you an update on where we are and where we're headed.
Thank you, Jake. Good evening, everyone. The Abrahams Group analyzed Berkshire Hills and Southern Berkshire's financials and enrollment, both historical and projected, as part of a study that concluded in 2020. As part of the study, the baseline analysis projections showed that operating shortfalls for both districts would require an increase in town assessments, a reduction in expenses or some combination of the two. Cost-saving measures are sought. Possibilities for cost savings could be in the form of collaboration between the districts and could be in the form of regionalization. The Abrahams Group's role, the Abrahams Group's role is to help analyze personnel and financial data to determine and understand the financial impact of different possibilities. What is the process used for the financial analysis being done? We are using actual FY21 district data and have compiled district expenses by function code, state object and location. We have determined FTEs by function, state, object and location. We have spent time determining what roles teachers play in each district and location. What greater subject do they teach? If they are specialists, what is their specialty? The districts have some costs like for employee benefits and utilities that are reported, reported at the district-wide level. We have allocated those costs, the different locations to get true costs by building. Having true costs by building has given us the ability to model the makeup of the districts and schools based on different possibilities. What is the financial impact of the different possibility? Now that we have the financial data in good shape, we have the ability to analyze expenditures and the makeup of the districts and schools in great detail. We can review FTEs and the teachers' roles. We can model different options to determine that financial impact with consideration given to central office, teachers in the classrooms, support staff, building operations, among other things. We can build a budget for collaboration of the districts or a new regional school district in different configuration. The research, research models and focus are full regionalization of the two districts into a single district, formation of high school combined district for grades nine through 12, and maintenance of independent elementary schools. Increase informal collaboration between the districts with the districts remaining independent. We have the ability to determine the financial impact of these different research models. Also, we can model different scenarios for the full regionalization model to compare the financial in-impact of each. With model runs showing that funding is available, what can that funding be used for? Savings at the town level and/or reinvestment of the funding and educational programs, services and supports such as CVTE programming, expansion of early childhood and others as seen on the list in front of you. What is the financial? What is the financial analysis telling us? That potential available funding for reinvestment could be substantial with a range from over $1 million to three times that amount. We are focused on ranges of estimates at this point, since it is tough to pinpoint anything more precise than that without further direction. Numbers and assumptions are preliminary and are still being reviewed by our team and also by the subcommittee. What are the next steps for the financial analysis? To review the assumptions that we're using with the finance subcommittee, to tweak expenditure changes in the different models based on the feedback that we receive, to review potential impact of transportation on revenues and expenditures, if there is any impact, and integrate that impact into the analysis, to review potential impact of school choice and tuitions on both revenues and expenditures, and again, to integrate that into the analysis, to finalize our analysis, showing the changes for the models and to present the results of the analysis and the models to the board.
Thanks, Matt. All right, so I just need a couple of minutes to wrap up Lucy and then we'll head into, I think, I'll give the meeting back to you to have some conversation. Just wanted to do a little preview of where we're headed. Again, this is a slide I showed you earlier. Matt just said it again, we'll be bringing to you on March 22nd, a full evaluation of the models. Again, we'll call it Model March. So summary of the models, review of assumptions and guardrails, parameters, if you want to call it that, benefits and barriers, where are their incentives, where are their disincentives? Then ultimately, we'll bring you an evaluation and recommendations. We certainly won't have every question answered, so it'll be outstanding questions. We expect even these presentations this week will generate questions you want us to answer. And hopefully, we'll be able to give you a next steps and maybe a, you know, a beginning timeline. Ken and I were talking about that today for where you might head. Just a couple of considerations that our team consistently thinks about. We know that any form of change, particularly this magnitude, is a big deal. It comes with social, emotional impact and we're very sensitive to that. We know that all the models will result in gains and losses and benefits and risks and these will vary by town, by district and certainly by stakeholder group. There are a lot of audiences that this work is important to and that they have, hopefully we have common priorities in wanting to move forward to the region, but sometimes competing priorities in other ways. And then we know that forming a new regional district, if that is a decision you decide to go, is an extensive negotiation process that involves the towns who will ultimately make the decision. A few other things. We know from what we've heard, working with you all for about seven months now, eight months, that there's some real points of consideration that we have to keep in mind. Elementary schools, we're hearing loud and clear, really, really important to folks in the eight towns. Travel time is a sensitive topic. We don't want kids on buses, as I said earlier. The idea around jobs and protecting jobs, not only for the folks who work there, but also as an economic driver for the region, class size, identity and culture, and then ultimately, organization and governance, which we haven't even touched yet, will certainly be things we've got to be thinking about. The evaluation criteria are using a really very basic. We're asking what sort of three basic questions. How does it impact educational quality? How does it impact finance and is it feasible? So does a solution lead to improved equitable access opportunities and outcomes for students? We're putting students first. Does the solution reflect sustainable models, build economies of scale, allow for reinvestment, prosecute towns? Then finally, how realistic is that this could be pulled off? Impact versus effort, politics, culture, organization. So our timeline, we are on actually February 7th and 9th, where the education and data overviews. We have some subcommittee meetings scheduled in the month of March, sorry, February, early March. And then we'll bring to you on March 22nd, the recommendations. The idea, I think, at that point is we go into a series of facilitated conversations. Hopefully, lots more work to do on community outreach and engagement. And then as you project forward, it really ends up, hopefully, we'll be moving towards the committee, the board, selecting a preferred model. That doesn't mean it's done. That means they're selecting preferred model to pursue further. And there's a lot of work that has to happen from that point forward. The schematic on the right is a little bit confusing. I've used it a few times. It really is the regionalization schematic. We're going to try to distill it for you all on the 22nd. Michelle, I promise that wasn't a knock to the Department of Ed. Just so I don't get myself in trouble. But, you know, we are right here on the process and really at the end of this thing is the idea is, are we recommending as a board to go forward with a particular model? So I'll just close with a couple of thoughts. I like quotes, they get me going. The first is from Free Air, many of you read, and he says, "Education is an act of love and as such an act of courage." And so we can't fear analysis, even if it means some pain in order to avoid creative discussion. So I hope what we have from this point forward is creative discussion. Seconds from Helen Keller. Life is either a daring adventure or nothing. Got to love that. My last is from a great philosopher. You come to the fork in the road, just take it. And so here we are. So with that said, we are closed, Lucy, and I will hand it back to you.
Okay, well, thank you to Jake and team for your work tonight, your presentation tonight and the incredible work you've done over the last nine months or so. I think you got started in June of 2021. This board, for those of you who are new to our meetings, we formed in March of 2020. So we've actually been at this in some form for close to two years. And it's heartening, I think, to look at all of the work that's been done. All of the careful thought and deliberation that has gone into the reports, all the people who have contributed data and insight into those reports. There's a lot of work that we have in front of us. The hardest work is in front of us, but I think we can all feel good about the work that's been done to date. So thank you, Jake and team, for all of that. So what I'd like to do tonight is open the floor first to planning board members, superintendents, our new union representatives for their reactions, comments, questions about not just what was presented on Monday night. We didn't get a chance to, to really talk about that on Monday because we had such a contentful presentation. But all of the reports that have been summarized tonight, because I know I found it really helpful to think about all of these reports that have been presented to us over the last six or seven months. Think about them as connected to each other and how, how they interrelate. So I'm going to open the floor to comments, reactions, questions on all of the reports that we've been thinking about, talking about over the last six months. And once we're through, planning board comments, superintendent comments, union rep comments, we will, at the end of the meeting, open it up for public comment. So I want to ask your forgiveness at the start because we have so many people on the screen. It's not always easy for me to see the hands that are up. So if I don't take you exactly in order, please forgive me, I'll do my best. Hands. I see, yeah, I see Peter Taylor and Patrick White. So Peter, you want to get started?
Thank you, Lucy. And I want to just join with Lucy in thanking the research team, both for the depth of your analysis, but also your, your crisp, your crisp summary tonight. You know, we've known from almost day one that this proposition had to be driven by educational quality. How could a process that could bring the districts together in some level of collaboration or partnership enhance student learning and outcomes? And what's exciting to me is I kind of think about the, you know, what we've learned together is that, you know, I see a proposition coming together where one plus one actually can equal three at a time when there's such headwinds against the district in term, to both districts in terms of enrollment and rising costs. And, and when you think about the, kind of the historic mission of schools around college, career and citizenship, how can we prepare students for those important roles that they have? You know, education is also key to our region's economic and community prosperity. And so how do we get from one to one to three? And it came into focus really for me with Tuesday's presentation because there were a couple of things that came through in terms of, of really the opportunities we have around career and vocational education. How, you know, through a collective vision, we can come to together, we can think about enhancing that aspect of, of the historic mission of schools in ways that really will prepare students to be more equipped to, to, to go into the workforce or to pursue things at least immediately other than college. But in some cases, but also really help the local economy. And that came through in a comment from, from the, the public forum in terms of how employers are really struggling to find staff that are equipped to do the roles that they need to do to grow their businesses. And so it can have a benefit not only on students, but also our, our local economy as we want to further invest in, in career vocational education. I think a statistic that, that was not mentioned tonight, but was on Tuesday or was that as compared to three or four years ago, there's a growing number of students, almost 25% right now, that are signaling that they either want to go immediately into the workforce or do something other than immediately go on to college. And I'm a firm believer that every student should aspire to go to the highest level of education possible, but sometimes that isn't necessarily going on right, right on to college, right after graduation. Students want to explore, do new things, step, step out of the educational context for a while. And so with that growing number of student interest and really going into the workforce or doing something other than college, how can we really equip our students to be able to, to do the most, you know, towards those ends and also hopefully stay and, and, and participate in the local economy? So I think that's an exciting shared vision as I think about our work together. And I think it does help us get to that one plus one equal three proposition, which is a win for students, a win for our communities and a win for our economy.
Thank you, Peter. Patrick, then Jane Burke. And because we've got a lot of guests with us tonight, if you could, planning board members, just identify what town you're from. I think that'd be helpful for the, for the audience.
My name is Patrick White. I'm from the Stockbridge Slough Board and I'm representative from Stockbridge. From both nights, what really struck me in the presentation is the statistic around Central County having 500-plus CBT students, North County having 400-plus CTV students and South County having 47 CBT, whatever it is now, students. I think that when you look at the slide from Monday around, around income levels of unskilled workers who have graduated from schools, we are, by not having options, more robust options similar to Central and North County, it strikes me, we are relegating a lot of, you know, folks on a non-college path to, you know, really terrible outcomes where they can't ever afford a home. They, they really are not going to have the options that many of our parents and grandparents in this, in this region had. And I just, I really think that, 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 that the topic around vocational and technical schools is, is the key to this entire effort and certainly why I stay engaged in it. Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick. Jane, Jane Burke.
I, I appreciate the past comments. I want to inquire as to why we don't have a more comprehensive approach to CVTE, which includes other options like early college internships and other very worthwhile and lauded activities. I would like to ask the team to come up with some information about those pathways because we, our towns are very smart and specifically responsible. And the cost of those facilities is quite high and those numbers were not put out. I'm also concerned with the focus on Monument's new school with very little focus on what Mount Everett has to offer. And I'm wondering why we're not hearing more about Mount Everett. I'm Jane Burke from New Marlboro and I'm the chair of the Southern Berkshire Regional School Committee. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Other questions, comments, reactions from board members, from superintendents, from our union reps?
Do you want me to comment anything Lucy or not? No.
Yeah, I think.
I just, I just want to, I appreciate what Jane said. And I obviously, when we do these presentations, it's very little information that is supported by a lot of information. I would really encourage people to go into the CBT full report, which is on the website, which has an exhaustive listing of in description of the career pathways at both high schools. And the incredible work they're doing on internships to try to get kids field experiences as ways around the fact that, in my opinion, they don't have career chapter 74 programs. So it's what we've offered is not a critique necessarily what they're doing because they're doing some pretty incredible work. And I believe that is captured in the report. Thanks.
George McGurn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate Jake's inclusion of the transportation analysis, which as Jake knows, and I believe you do as well. The operations subcommittee has spent a significant time discussing. And I hope that beyond that analysis, that all members of this planning board and certainly all of our consultants are aware of the fact that the recent bids received by Berkshire Hills and Southern Berkshire Regional School Districts have increased transportation costs by 30 and 40% respectively. And it seems to me this ought to be an important priority for further discussion for the entire planning board. Thank you. I, by the way, am representing Aderman. I'm on the Aderman Select Board and member of the planning.
And and Chair of the Operations Subcommittee. So so thank you for that input, George. Other planning board members. We're usually a very talkative group. So I'm I'm just wondering if the the audience is a new thing for us, the large audience. And I'm wondering if that's having an effect on people's enthusiasm for speaking up, but.
Hand up Colin.
I see Colin has his hand up, so I'm going there next.
Colin, go ahead. Thanks. Thanks Lucy. And I apologize, I'm joining a little late tonight, but I was there on on Monday night. And I just wanted to, I guess, support what Patrick said. I was I guess, after looking at the the numbers or seeing the numbers that were presented on Monday about those who go to college and even those who try to go to college but don't get all the way through to a degree. It seemed like it was it was a lower number than I thought that we're getting that we're completing college. And so therefore, the idea of the of the vocational path was really appealing to me. And it some people may disagree with that, but let's just look at the, you know, if people aren't making it to college or through college rather than having that option and knowing that it's being it's very successful. And in the other part of the county seems like an appropriate thing for us to consider. So I was, I just, all the things fit together and the comment about it benefiting our community. Yeah, I would say that there's huge amounts of employers who who would say, give me the people and food service and and healthcare and mechanic and the trades, all of that stuff. So I don't think we could give them enough people. And then, you know, I didn't, on what Jane said, I didn't take it to be, well, Berkshire Hills is doing this and and Southern Berkshire is not. I took it to be, as part of what we're looking at, this would be part of the solution. And so whether that's at Berkshire Hills or Sheffield. You know, I didn't hear them, someone saying that's that decision has been made. But I think Berkshire Hills is farther along on on some of their planning for that. So and by the way, I'm a finance committee in Sheffield and I and I'm representing Sheffield. Thank you.
Thanks Colin. Bonnie, I had, I saw your hand up and I inadvertently took it down, but I'm going to recognize you now.
Thank you, Lucy. Part of the silence, and I don't mean to project on it, is I came away from Monday being very honest about it. Feeling that it was fait accompli. And having looked as being on the education committee, oh, I'm the school committee representative of the three members of Sheffield. And what was presented left me feeling that that presentation was beyond what we had as a mandate. And given the fact that on all of the reports that we received from the Hanover Group, the biggest issue, they said, is you must bring the community along. So I was happy to hear tonight that Jake spoke about spoke about that. But if 60% of the respondents, whether it was from the graduates, community members on each of the three surveys said they are in the middle ground. It means that we have still, as you recognized at our previous meetings, a lot of education to do out there. And maybe the report was not meant to be the way that it was. But I came away very disappointed and feeling we were being told that, well, and I'm just about quoting, Southern Berkshire will either come along by choice or tuition. And this is where we're heading. And I'm glad Colin brought up one of the things. There are many robust programs in the arts that exist in probably both our schools. I know definitely at Southern Berkshire, the art curriculum is incredible and people going into the fields. We have to look, it's 2022, and I will bring up what I brought up two years ago. We have to look beyond brick and mortar. And if we are looking at how we are educating our students, we have to look at the broader picture of what career preparation means for all of our children. And that doesn't mean that I that I would turn against any type of consolidation activities. It means what I started with, I came away very disappointed from that presentation, the vocational presentation that I felt went beyond the mandate and basically told us, this is where we're going. And I appreciate how Jake handled the reports tonight. So I am a little less, little less chagrined, but still very concerned. Maybe some others are feeling the same way. I'm not speaking for anyone else, but thank you for the time to comment.
Thanks Bonnie. Just for those in the audience, so people are clear on our process here. And I'm sort of want to respond to the words fait accompli. You know this Bonnie, but not everyone on the call does. What was presented, what's been presented are the reports of our research team. The the regional school district planning board has not yet taken a vote on anything. And we haven't even yet had our facilitated discussion on the reports. That said, we did ask the research team to not just research, but make some findings and make some recommendations. So they're getting to that point, right? They they've been working for six to nine months. They've done a ton of work. They're under contract, we're paying them under that contract. And they have deliverables to deliver to us, which includes recommendations. So we're, they're getting to their deliverables and presenting their deliverables to us. Now it's going to be in our lap to consider those reports, have our deliberations facilitated and come to a vote or recommendation, which then goes out to the town boards. So there's a lot of process here. And then, once it goes to the town select boards, it goes to the residents of the eight towns. So we are far, far away from a fait accompli in terms of process here. So I just wanted to make sure that those on the call are aware of how this process works. We are, yeah, we are in essence a study group. I know I said that the very beginning of this process back in March of 2020. And we hired an expert team to do some research and make some findings. They're presenting us with their deliverables, they're not done yet. We have the meeting in in March where they're going to present these models. But as they work through those findings, they, the research team, are coming to some conclusions. And I think you were hearing sort of some previews of that on Monday. So I understand your reaction, but I just want to make clear what this process is for the group, for the larger group.
Thank you very much for saying that.
Okay, yeah, of course. And thank you for bringing it up. So I had the opportunity to explain that to the larger group. I think Roger, your hand was up next.
It was and it is. I just wanted to make a few comments that parallel some of the other things that were were stated tonight. The the presentation on on Monday night, my first observation, it was the first time we had more than the planning board attending one of our briefings from the from the planning team. So community observation has been low to none. And and the other night, we had over 80 people. Tonight, we have over 80 people. Our team is only 24 if we happen to all show up. So I I thought what was interesting and a little concerning to me after the meeting was and particularly after some of the public comments. People who are coming new to this, uninformed, heard a presentation that sounded and now very much fait accompli, if you if you weren't totally tuned into the long process we've been involved in. And it was honestly the first time we've had a, I think, a solid recommendation for the from the team. They said, you know, if you want to go down the CBT path, here's some of the things we think would make it work. And it did, for the very first time, bring up the subject of one high school is the way to make it work. And so I think people were able to walk away from that with interpretations. I was hoping they wouldn't walk away from that. You know, we've got, you know, we got the core of a, it almost came across like if we do CBT, and if we focused on that, there's kind of the the starting point, then we could sort out the rest of it. And tonight, hopefully prove to people that there's a whole lot of considerations and that what the team presented the other night was pretty narrow. It says, okay, if you want to do CBT, CBT based on our research, we think this is the most advised way to do it. But it was, I I hope that the folks who are listening in from the public will not take that as a conclusion. Because as you just said, we're like miles away from a conclusion. That's it. Thank, oh, and I'm from West Stockbridge, happen to be on the Select Board too, but I was on this committee first.
Thanks Roger. Nadine.
Thank you, Lucy. Bonnie and Roger both, thank you so much for your comments of how things may have been interpreted. I was very pleased with the report on Monday night. From my perspective, as a as a planning board member, I've been waiting for this information. You know, some for some for this board, two years, and I've been thinking about this since September of 2019. So I'm very, was very happy to hear the the research team tell us they think there is a direction that might make the most sense. And I also want to acknowledge Jane's comment about, you know, the focus is sort of if if you build it, you should build it in Great Barrington. And I don't necessarily think that there's only one way to build it, you know. And I think that the team had to do some narrowing down. And it seemed to make sense since Great Barrington is discussing a new building. What I was most impressed with Monday night and tonight is the number of community members that spent the time to sit through the entire meeting from beginning to end. We we started with 60, midway, we had over 80, and at the end, we still had nearly 80 at the meetings. And that is just the tip of the iceberg in how we have to get this information communicated to the community. And I would like to see more people take the time to watch the videos, read, read the presentation. I'm encouraging everyone who speaks to me about this to take the time to to look at this information. And it obviously, this is not fait accompli. We haven't had a vote on this, nor have we had a good, healthy discussion to come up with other thoughts that we all have. And I think, you know, Jane Burke's comments are to be recognized that, you know, if there's not just one path here, but the team had to take one path for the for the moment of presentation. And before I close, I just want to say Jake and your team, I I really was impressed with the presentation. And I know the amount of work has been grueling. And I, for one, as a committee member who has taken the time to read all of the reports as they're coming, am very grateful for all of your efforts. And I I'm on the finance committee in Sheffield. I'm sorry I didn't record announce that in the beginning.
Thank you, Nadine. Am I missing any hands from the planning board? Members, superintendents, union reps? Okay, well, obviously, lots of food for thought tonight and Monday night. March 22 is the next planning board meeting. There's some subcommittee meetings in between. And so we're we're all going to be able to really dig into the reports that have been posted on the website and hear some more in March. That's when the models are actually going to be presented. And then the plan is to begin our facilitated discussions among planning board members and union reps. Before we get to public comments tonight, I just want to run through the subcommittee reports, which is on the agenda. This will be very short. On project management subcommittee, we have On project management subcommittee, we have an update on the budget. I don't know Jake, if you want to go through that now?
No, I actually cut it, I cut it out Lucy.
Okay, so we will, we will look at the budget update at our next project management subcommittee meeting, which is February, help me out, February twenty-fifth, is that right?
I'm actually not sure.
It's on the website. It's that week in February. But we're basically in pretty good shape when it comes to our budget. We do have some renewed consultant contracts, because you may recall that our original contracts went through December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-one, so we have renewed those contracts for those consultants who continue to work with us. And we're continuing to, to do that as need be. The old task force, new Burke has picked up some of that cost expense for us in this interim period, and we're very appreciative to them for doing that. In terms of facilitation, board members may recall, audience members may not know that the Federal Mediation and Conciliation Service has agreed to step in as a facilitator once we get to those facilitated discussions about which of the three broad options that have been presented is the preferred option, if any. And we're working with a team from the Federal Mediation and Conciliation Service to facilitate those discussions probably early April into maybe May. That's, that's the plan right now. So that's really the report from the project management subcommittee. Anything more Peter Taylor that we have to report from project management subcommittee?
Thank you for covering it, thank you.
Okay. And then Community Outreach Subcommittee, which is a subcommittee that's got a lot of work ahead of it, as we know. I mean, this is really the time for community outreach, both in terms of getting information out and getting information in. We posted a request for quotes last month for firms to assist us with getting information out and also gathering information in, which could be done by a single firm or two separate firms. We've gotten two proposals in so far. And we have a community outreach subcommittee meeting. We're trying to get organized. For those of you on that subcommittee, please respond to Mary's doodle poll so we can get that on the books. But I'm hoping that we can get that scheduled in the next few weeks. Make a selection on someone to help us with community outreach and get that work started just as soon as we can or continue that work to the extent we've already done some of it through Mary Nash's great work on the survey and the focus groups. Anything more from community outreach subcommittee members? No, okay. So I think I'm now going to open the floor to public comments. I would ask that community members identify themselves when they begin and also try and keep your comments to two minutes or so so that we can get through all of the comments that folks might want to make. And I see, I see Renee Wood, I don't know if that's you Renee or?
Yes, it is me.
Okay, great, well, you're on.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I was at Monday's presentation and there's the work, this is finally coming into focus. And I think the work that's being done is extremely impressive. I would make a couple of, of comments on this. First of all, I want to go back to that CVTE school in Lexington. I'm not quite sure what my new career choice is going to be, but I, I do want to go back to that. I also want to point out that Lexington has twenty-two, over twenty-two hundred high school students. And even in Pittsfield, there's over seventeen hundred high schools students. So I think we have to be realistic and not scare all of us who pay taxes. That is what is being contemplated. Second of all, I do not know if there has been any survey work done with the students at our respective high schools and possibly even down to seventh grade, because a lot of kids know what they want to do to see what their perceptions are of CVTE and what types of classes they may be interested in. And this may even be something that if there's a way of surveying high school students that have graduated within the last three years and are actually out in the workforce and are still going to college, that might be very useful information, because that's based on what our kids want, not necessarily what other parts of the state can afford and are offering their students. Second of all, I also heard basically what I thought was a fait accompli with the presentation on the CVTE. And I think that was more maybe Ken's enthusiasm for this, given his deep knowledge. But I did feel, well, what's happening to Southern Berkshire, why are we being so kicked to the curb? And of course, in none of the financial presentations tonight, which I hope the Abrams will take into account, is what is the cost of this monumental new high school, wherever it is placed, with the CVTE programs. I know Jake can comment, but I think Taconic was over a million, over a hundred million dollars between the state, maybe it was one-twenty between the state and the, the town of Pittsfield. So we have many fewer students and many fewer taxpayers. And there is nothing that gives me a hope that Monument Mountain is going to be successful on what its fifth or sixth request for state funding when the building group, whatever they're called, has basically found that they in the past have not been eligible due to the poor repair they've kept of their school. I don't want to start a controversy, I'm just making a comment. The second, the third thing I heard that I, I want to take some caution on is I almost heard dangle tonight, the feeling that, for those of you like Egremont and maybe in New Marlborough, where there have been particularly in Egremont fierce fights to keep their little school. I just don't think we can afford a new high school with CVTE. This, all of this is being planned, and oh, by the way, you get to keep your small school, okay? So we can't make a hybrid out of this that allows everybody to get what they want and pass this on to the taxpayers. So if we are going to have a consolidated agreement and we are going to move forward with consolidation, I would really urge that we consider cutting the cord on some of these things and not just build a bigger mutual school agreement that when those towns vote, and again, I am singling out Egremont, I don't know if there's any small schools in the Monument Mountain, excuse me, the Southern Berkshire system. Thank you very much for taking my comments.
Thank you Renee. Very helpful to hear that perspective. I do want to give Mary Nash an opportunity to respond to the comment, the question you asked about whether we've gotten any feedback from students on the CVTE option and choices, because that was part of our, our survey. And we did get some very interesting feedback from students on what they wanted and what they thought would be popular programs. And we also got that feedback from the teachers and the community. It was very interesting, very interesting responses. So Mary, are you still on, can you speak to that a bit?
Yeah, each of the surveys that we did included a section where we, we had a whole list of different CVTE programs. And it wasn't just the ones that you heard about traditionally, it was arts and graphics and trades and a number of different areas. So we asked students and recent alumni who had graduated in the past four years, what would you be interested in taking, what would you have been interested in taking? And then we also asked the same questions of the community and staff in the schools as to what they think should be offered. The community and the staff leaned heavily toward the trades, feeling I guess that the community needs to have people in those different trade areas. And the students leaned more, I guess, toward just particular areas of interest, like I think health assisting, business and entrepreneurship, animal science were big. The one theme that we saw across all of those groups that we surveyed was culinary arts. Everyone we surveyed had that like in their top few topics that they thought should be offered. And I guess that goes along well with the hospitality industry here. So it was interesting to see that there were differences in what the students and alumni wanted when you compared it to what the community and the staff thought they should have. So some interesting results that would, people should look at the report and look at that in more detail. But, and it's something we can explore further as we continue to do outreach.
And Mary, wasn't it the case that, I can't remember the exact percentage, but over eighty percent in each of the three groups, students, staff and community members thought CVTE, expanded CBT offerings were either important or very important in both districts? Wasn't it something along those lines?
Yeah, when we looked at all the different factors of what people thought was, was more important or less important, CVTE was the common thread. Every, every group that we surveyed thought that it was important to have CVTE programs. That's right.
Sharon Gregory.
Thank you Sharon Gregory, Great Barrington, former chair of the finance committee, if that matters. I've been pretty impartial to both districts. I spent twenty years in Sheffield and twenty years in Great Barrington.
Is that his name?
What's that?
I don't even remember, I couldn't remember.
Mary, can you mute George for us? Thanks, go ahead Sharon.
Initially, I thought we could have two high school campuses and that would make everybody happy. But the CTE presentation was compelling. It's not just because of Ken's enthusiasm, but I feel it's compelling for our students and it's long in coming. The integration of academic and vocational programs was very important to me. I worry about that for a long time. And so the geographic centrality of both meant a lot to me. But then when you think about the location, I mean frankly, I wouldn't care which location we use. But when you consider the investment and such, we have to figure, you know, something that works. And the transportation was an issue. So I guess, I'm wondering, I, I can understand all the emotional reactions people have. I do think it will be affordable. I'm one of the people that didn't want Berkshire Hills to fund everything they wanted and didn't want this go it alone situation back in two thousand fourteen and fifteen. But I do feel that with state aid, and I think they're very enthusiastic about these things, would help a great deal and we can have a pared down program. So the question is, not to rush things along, but would there be a time, a kind of a milestone when the planning board would take an initial vote as to what the next study phase would focus on? Because I think it's important to look at the three options and say, you know, it's, it's not a third effort for each one of them. This is all very long in coming. So, you know, it can't happen fast enough, although yes, I do want the community to come along. And I'm willing to do as much as possible to inform people, I've already begun doing that. I would also encourage the board to facilitate public discussion by pulling in community leaders to spread the word as quickly as possible. I think it's a very, very important, you've done so much work, there's so much data fact finding that back up the direction you're going. And yes, there are still emotions, but I really hope we don't come to the point where I have heard from some people, don't bother me with the facts, I just don't want this. Thank you.
Thanks Sharon. I'm not seeing any other hands up. Jake, are you seeing anyone else?
No, I am not. Oh, sorry, Bob Kilmer.
Good, Bob Kilmer, you're on.
Thank you. While I appreciate, excuse me, while I appreciate all the work that's been done and what I've seen tonight in the collaboration is, is great. But from the start, I thought this would be a very difficult project to meld. I thought there would be cost, but there would also be benefit. From what I've seen so far, this is growing by leaps and bounds with a cost that could be astronomical. I'm not sure that, speaking for myself, that we are in a position where we are going to want to invest this kind of money in this complicated of a task. We would be building a large facility while we're trying to merge several towns and regional districts. The complication and, and the possibility for a lot of missteps and under cost projections is enormous. So for me, I'll keep an open mind moving forward. But this seems to be a monster that's growing exponentially at an alarming rate. It's really nice to have the best of everything, but it doesn't mean we can afford the best of everything. So that's my opinion at this point. Thank you.
Thanks Bob, and I, I do encourage you to stay tuned, because at the March twenty-two meeting, you're going to see the models that sort of lay out what the finances were, look like under each of the three options under consideration. So I think that's going to be a really important meeting for you to, for you to attend. Dennis Sears.
Well, let me unmute first. And I'd first of all like to congratulate Jake on the great work that his crew has done over an extended period of time. And then I had a question that I wanted to ask you Lucy, which is that when you were talking, you were talking about, you know, that, that, that it's time to find some more money, you know, as, as this moves forward, okay? And especially the good work that Jake and his crew has done. Should we anticipate that the towns are going to be asked to come up with some more money for, for this, for the ongoing work?
If I said that Dennis, I misspoke. I think what I said or intended to say was that we were in good shape with our budget and the money that we already have in the door.
Okay, thank you, that's, I was curious about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm I'm going to jump in, Lucy, because I'm not shy about this. We've had a great partnership with the Department of Ed for two years now. And I'm not putting Michelle on the spot, if she's still on, but we hope that the regionalization money will continue. My understanding is this is one of the more. Involved and I think organized regionalization processes in the state. So if we continue forward momentum, my expectation is that. With a compelling argument, the state will continue to argue, will invest in your in your process.
Okay, I see Steph Graham, your hand is up.
Hi, yes.
Hi.
I'm a resident of Great Barrington and a teacher at Mount Everett, and I have a choice student in Mount in Mount Everett as well. This is my first meeting, and thank you for opening up to public comment, I just want to say that. While I have engaged in the website that you created and it's and it's laid out nicely. Up until this week, I didn't see a lot of that information, so I do apologize that I'm not completely informed, but. I do believe that the staff at our school is very aware of what's happening, and. I don't want to speak for everybody, but I think that there's a lot of miscommunication about what the mandates are from the regional planning board. I do think that there are other options that maybe aren't being considered, some other collaboration efforts. And I do want to say, I hope that this board explores other other creative ways. We can consolidate some of those financial burdens. That that the districts have, instead of thinking straight to collaboration, which just feels like jumping the gun a little bit. Thank you.
Straight to collaboration or straight to regionalization?
Straight to regionalization is what I meant.
Okay, that's what I thought you meant, okay, yeah, and and we definitely have. Collaboration, a more formalized. Option of or more formalized method or collaboration agreement as one of the three options that. Is under consideration and a lot of work has gone into looking at that and continues to go into looking at that. So it's certainly not off the table. Anybody else? Okay, well, thank you, everyone, again, for participating tonight, I know we had a very long meeting Monday night. We've been. Booking two and a half hours in our doodle polls, planning board members, just in case we need to go over two hours, but at the beginning of. This process two years ago, we committed to each other that we would try and stay. Within two hours, because it's a long time to sit, and we're just about at the two hour mark right now. I do want to again. Ask that people on the planning board get back to Mary on those doodle polls. As quickly as you possibly can, because it's getting increasingly difficult to find dates. Where we can even get a quorum together, much less our goal, which is to get everybody together, especially as we get into these critical discussions. So please make every effort to get back to Mary on the doodle polls and be as generous as you possibly can be. In thinking about whether you can make a meeting, even if it means, as it does for me many times. Moving things that were on my calendar to a different date. Because especially now with our union reps on board, and as we bring in the facilitators. From the Federal Mediation and Conciliation Service, I might have that backwards. It's going to be harder and harder to find dates that everyone can attend, we're going to try and book out earlier. But if there's any way you can check yes on a date on a doodle poll, please, please do so, because. Otherwise, we're just not going to be able to find dates when we can get everybody together, and I do want. As full participation as we can possibly get as we get into the meetings in March, April, and May. So that's my personal plea, I'll call for a motion to adjourn. So move. Okay, Deb moved, I think, and Nadine seconded, I'm going to call for a roll call vote. Chuck Ketchin.
Yes.
George McGurn. Tom Burkle.
Yes.
Thank you, George, Tom.
Hi.
Danell. Deb Phillips.
Yes.
Peter Taylor.
Yes.
Ann Coburn, did you join us or no? Okay, John Silbert.
Yes.
Susan Smith.
Yes.
Tara White.
Yes.
Jane Burke.
Yes.
Nadine Haver.
Yes.
Bonnie Silvers.
Yes.
Patrick White.
Yes.
Marie Ryan.
Yes.
Roger Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Molly Thomas.
Yes.
And Lucy, yes, thank you all, thank you guests, we'll see you again in March.
Thank you, everybody, good night. Night, everybody.